All right, I'd like to call the February 3rd, 2011 Board of County Commissioners meeting to order, and I will ask you all to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello. Good morning. We have first on the agenda a reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance, and we have Dan Chandler here to help us with this ZDO.
Good morning. The matter before you is the reading and adoption of ZDO 226. This ordinance implements the station area community plan for the area around the Fuller Road Transit Station. The Clackamas County Planning Commission recommended approval of the ordinance at a public hearing on June 14th of 2010. The staff conducted a lot of additional outreach and negotiations with affected property owners throughout the fall, brought this ordinance back to the Board of County Commissioners at a public hearing on December 15th. A quorum of the board unanimously approved the measure and directed staff to prepare the ordinance for reading and adoption. Staff has done so. The ordinance is before you this morning.
Great. Does the commission have any clarifying questions?
No.
All right. I will ask for motion to read ZDO 226 by title only.
Madam Chair, I move that we read zoning and development ordinance number 226 by title only.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leehan and seconded by Commissioner Leininger. I wrote "I." All those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. I'll ask Mary to read the ZDO 226 by title only.
Sure. This is ordinance number ZDO 226, and ordinance amending Chapter 4, 5, and 10 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Section 1,017,000 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, and changing the comprehensive plan designation and zoning for certain properties in the Fuller Road Station community.
Great, thank you. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ZDO 226.
Chair Peterson, I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance number 226. Now I know why Charlotte took the other one. I move we adopt zoning and development ordinance number 226, amending Chapter 4, 5, and 10 of the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan and Sections 1,000 and 1,700 of the Clackamas County Zoning and Development Ordinance, and changing the comprehensive plan designation and zoning for certain properties in the Fuller Road Station community as previously approved at the December 15th, 2010 land use hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leininger and seconded by Commissioner Leehan. Is there any further discussion? I guess I just want to say thanks to all that were involved, the staff and all of the property owners out at Fuller Road Station. I wasn't here for the first reading, but in complete agreement with the outcomes that we are all trying to achieve in that area, and it's totally relevant to have Kaiser here for our next presentation because Kaiser has been such a big supporter of active communities, active transportation, making sure that the community life is supporting healthy living. And really, the things that we've done in this area will promote healthy citizens and promote a lot of efficiency within our utilities and service provision. So there's a lot of pros to the outcome of this, and it's an exciting opportunity and looking forward to moving it forward. Anything else? All right. With that, all in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved. Thank you. Thanks, Dan. I just wanted to, since I forgot, let you know that our two gentlemen on the council on each end are actually at a Congressman Schrader event, listening to all the needs within Clackamas County with Congressman Schrader, and so we thought that was pretty important for them to be there, so we are the three of us today. So the next thing on our agenda is a presentation proclaiming February 2011 as Children's Dental Health Month in Clackamas County, and we have Marty from Community Health to help us with this presentation. Good morning.
Thank you. Clackamas County Community Health, a division of the Health, Housing, and Human Services Department, is pleased to present to the Board of County Commissioners an opportunity to proclaim February as Children's Dental Health Month. National Children's Dental Health Observances began in Ohio in February 1941 as a single-day event. The concept has since become a nationwide, month-long recognition of dental health as a critical element of children's health. The Board and Health, Housing, and Human Services demonstrated a commitment to improving the oral health of county residents in some of the following ways. We've convened a dental health task force in the county with community stakeholders and developed a multi-year action plan. We provide dental health services at the Beaver Creek Primary Care Clinic. We support oral health coordination through the Small Grants Program in the North Clackamas School District. We've hired a dental health coordinator to promote awareness and link together dental health services throughout the county. And we've initiated a dental varnish program for children ages zero to five through the Healthy Start Program. The Children's Dental Health Month proclamation is important in order to promote positive oral health education and preventive care. The proclamation allows Clackamas County to highlight serious, preventable oral health conditions that are prevalent in our county's children. In the 2007 Oregon Smile Survey, it was noted that 53% of children grades one through five in our county's Title I schools have tooth decay. 19% of these children have untreated decay and are in need of treatment. Clackamas County Community Health will highlight the many activities that are planned during the month of February as well as throughout the year. We ask the Board to recognize the Northwest Kaiser Permanente Dental Program as an important community partner in addressing oral health issues. Kaiser Dental recently donated 6,000 dental hygiene kits, which were distributed to homeless individuals in January during the homeless count, and will also be distributed to children throughout the year as part of the Backpack Buddy Program. Kaiser representatives will briefly highlight their commitment to the welfare of children's dental health, followed by my presentation of the proclamation.
Thank you. So I think we've got Amy and Kristi? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Amy Marco. Before I introduce Krista McWilliams, who is Kaiser Permanente's Dental Care Programs' Director of Quality and Service, I just wanted to say that it really is an honor and a privilege to be able to partner with Clackamas County. We have such parallels and such common missions and goals, and the ability to move forward every day to make sure that no child goes without the care that they need, and we thank you for that and for letting us work with you to that end. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kristi, who can talk about some of the things that we have done and are continuing to do in Clackamas County.
Thank you. Amy, yes, we're very pleased to be here today, and I am personally pleased to be here. I have roots in Clackamas County. I was raised in Clackamas County, went through North Clackamas School District, graduated from Clackamas High School before it was Alder Creek Middle School, so that's a few years ago. I have worked for this organization for a long time and am so pleased with our ability to help the larger communities that we serve, and so it's been a real honor to do that with Clackamas County. And in addition to the hygiene kits we've distributed over the years, we've done a number of things. Most recently, in 2010, or yeah, 2010, we provided a $30,000 grant towards a school-based dental coordinator in Canby School District. And then in 2009, we did a similar grant to North Clackamas Schools. So that helps us with our mission of working upstream to help prevent the disease in the first place and help to educate parents' children so that we don't end up in a place where we have so many children, the numbers that Marty was talking about are staggering, so we don't have so many children that have dental disease. That's our mission, is to really look back in a couple of decades and see that we've had an impact on oral health. We also do a lot of what we call Give Kids a Smile clinics, which is actually a national program. We participate in those, and that does help us, help the kids who have cavities today that we weren't able to help prevent. So that's our goal, that's our mission, and we're very proud to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to ask Dr. John Snyder if he could step up for just a moment. We have some really exciting news to share with the county as well.
Thank you. Probably need one person to...
Again, let me reiterate the thanks for the opportunity to work with Clackamas County on upstream preventative focus, which is critical to our mission and values. But one thing I wanted to talk about today was just, we're really excited about, we're building our 17th office here in the Northwest Region, and that office will be in Oregon City at the Oregon City Shopping Mall, and we hope to have that completed in the third quarter of this year. So that'll again expand our services within Clackamas County, so we're very excited about that. So I wanted to share that, and again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Before you leave, just one question.
Yes.
When you talk about prevention, there are a lot of diseases that result from not having good healthcare at the beginning in terms of dental care. I mean, can you just expand a little bit about, you know, the depth of what happens when you...
Right. Well, I think the one thing, there's just emerging body of evidence that's demonstrating that you can't separate oral health from overall wellness, and that's really our focus with an integrated care delivery model that we have, to really leverage that synergy between those two, at times, separate entities, medical and dental. And so we have a real opportunity to bring those together because there is that emerging evidence that's saying there's a linkage. You can't have ongoing disease in your mouth without having an impact on your overall health. And so this early prevention that we're talking about is really, as it relates to oral health, is more the discomfort associated with having untreated disease, oral health diseases, primarily dental cavities. And so it expands to chronic diseases like linkages between diabetes and oral health. So there's direct connections with that. There's emerging evidence around cardiovascular heart health and the impact that oral health can have on that. So those are kind of the highlight areas that are really emerging within the evidence. So we have a great opportunity, again, to leverage that integrated care model that we have here in the Northwest with the medical program.
Really important.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Comments?
Well, I would just expand a little beyond the oral health being an indicator for general physical health, that it also plays an important role in social and mental health. As we know, working with the jail system, the high percentage of people who come into the correction system who have really horrendous conditions in terms of oral health, that makes it hard to hold a job, makes it hard to otherwise function socially and mentally if you're in pain, and so it just has a cascading impact on many levels, physical and societal, so.
Yeah, the smile is, we're fond of saying the smile is connected to the overall health of an individual, including their mental well-being as well.
Yeah, sure.
And the self-esteem that has.
Thank you.
Yeah, great.
And one more person? Casper, did you want to come up?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here, and thank you for your commitment to helping out with our combined services to Clackamas County. Thank you. Marty?
So I would like to present a proclamation to you for your consideration and approval, proclaiming the month of February 2011 as Children's Dental Month in Clackamas County. Whereas the physical and mental health of our children is critical to the future well-being of our state and the development of our nation, guarding the health of our youth is thus imperative for society. And whereas an important component of children's general health is dental health, and learning and maintaining a routine of good oral hygiene is a primary step in the development of a healthy body. And whereas educational programs in support of good dental health habits for children and youth reinforced by caregivers, schools, healthcare professionals, and community partners is instrumental. And whereas these activities showcase the sense of community, public-private partnership, and dedication which Clackamas County promotes, now therefore, we, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim the month of February 2011 as Children's Dental Health Month in Clackamas County.
Great. Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Chair Peterson, I move we proclaim February 2011 as Children's Dental Health Month in Clackamas County.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leininger and seconded by Commissioner Leehan. Any further comments or questions? No? All those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved, and we would like to come down and get a picture with you guys and all of the folks that were involved in the children's dental care program, so that we can thank you for your support. All right, I'm going to ask you to kind of tuck yourselves in. There you go. Okay. There you go. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, infinity brush, too. Which is the best.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we have no discussion items today, but we do have a consent agenda, and I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Chair Peterson, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Leehan and seconded by Commissioner Leininger that we approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? I do have one item that I just want to bring up that Commissioner Savis brought up to me, and I'm sure if he was here today, he would want it brought up, and that is that he had somebody who made a comment to him that it's kind of hard to, you know, view the scroll as consent, because the consent agenda is very long. Every week it's very long, and while we post it on the web, and I know that, I guess I'm just asking on behalf of Commissioner Savis, that we have a discussion in study session about how we maybe present the consent agenda and get material out, also how we deal with it in business meetings, because I know at the cities, they sometimes read...
Title only.
By title only the consent agenda, but of course, it's very long, and we would need to rotate it so it doesn't get one person. But I think if we could have just a little discussion about how we get information out, because we've taken giant leaps forward in getting the consent material out so that people can comment or ask us questions before it's approved, but just, you know, revisiting it is always a good idea. So just wanted to bring that up on behalf of Commissioner Savis. With that, since I have no discussion on the actual consent agenda itself, all those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it and the motion is approved, and we can kind of figure out how we have a discussion about that in the study sessions coming up. Citizen communication. Yep. So, oh, did I, I missed that. It was at the end of the page, on the last page. We're now at the point for citizen communication, and I have one person signed up, and that is Skip Armspay. Skip, if you want to come forward and give us your name and address and the record, and you'll have three minutes on the clock.
Good morning, Clackamas County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Charles Armspay. I go by the nickname Skip. I live in Clackamas County. My address is 170 Southwest Birds Hill Road, Portland, Oregon 97219-8502. I'm here today for a, just asking for a list of projects and initiatives that affect our neighborhood organization called the Birds Hill Community Planning Organization, Neighborhood Association. This is a joint Clackamas County Community Planning Organization and City of Lake Oswego Neighborhood Association. At this point, we've been recognized for about a year, probably about 18 months. And one of the key aspects in the bylaws that were ratified by the county in 2009, June, was the Article II, Section 4, which had about four items in it, essentially get a list of projects and initiatives that affect us. And I think it'd be, ultimately, I can see this going forward to all neighborhood associations and such in the county and in the region, that we have an annual report, and this is what I'm here to start priming the pump on and getting that started. So the map before you just shows you where we are, gives you the nomenclature of the maps and the area where we stand, township, 2S, 1E, and we are a very complex area because of all the jurisdictions we touch, including the Willamette River. So we can be used as the guinea pig on this, and hopefully, we can get something going in the next couple of months. Thank you.
We appreciate the request, and we'll certainly be getting back to you. And I've made Cam Gilmore aware of, and our Transportation and Development Director of the request, and his actual response was, it's something that we should probably look at for all of the CPOs, both inside and outside the urban area, and ask them, you know, what projects they see coming up in the future as well. So it's definitely something that is a good idea coming forward, and we'll get you your specific information, at least for Birds Hill at this point. So thank you.
Great, and I have visited with Lake Oswego on Tuesday night. They got a previous version of this, and then I will be hitting Multnomah County Metro and City of Portland in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Good day.
I have no one else signed up for citizen communication. If there's anyone who wishes to come forward on a non-agenda item, now would be the time. No one coming forward. We'll move on to Commissioner Communication, and I guess if I could just start it out, in the last 24 hours, I would say that new information has come to light and brought to our attention on the Sellwood Bridge, and I think we just want to let everyone know that we will be researching and evaluating that information. Obviously, as projects move along in a process, funding streams and the cost of the projects change, and so as that happens, we need to take that time and reevaluate where we are. And so over the next couple of weeks, the Board will be looking into what specific changes have been made on the Sellwood Bridge and what the status of that project is, and so just so everybody knows that we're aware. And with that, Commissioner Leininger, did you want to kick off?
Sure. You know, I'm actually going to add to that issue. Throughout our analysis of the vehicle registration fee issue, a key question has been, is Clackamas County support needed to do the Sellwood Bridge project, which is an essential project, and essential to our well-being as a community. There are always developments in a budget for a major capital project, and there's been a lot of really important value engineering to make the project as cost-efficient as possible, and that's what Chair Peterson is referring to. And the good thing is, because we are committed to being good stewards of the local community's money, that from the get-go with this project, we identified, and it's in our resolution, that our decision to put money into the project is contingent on the project needing our money. And the resolution actually says Clackamas County has limited its capital contribution to 22 million if that contribution is necessary for the completion of the project. So we know that you need to be able to rely on us to analyze things and make a determination of whether or not money is necessary, and we're going to be looking very hard at this issue because we owe it to the community members. So that's that. Two other really exciting pieces of information. One is that we have the next Clackamas County Unplugged, Plugged-In, I'm sorry, the Get Plugged-In event, at which we will be responding live to questions presented by people in the community over the internet, live in the audience, and it'll be broadcast, I believe, both on our cable channel and streaming live on the internet. So that's exciting. For details, check our website at www.clackamas.us. And the final thing is, I received some great information yesterday from the foundation community in Oregon and Southwest Washington that on May 19th, they would like to do a funders tour here in Clackamas County to look at some of the great projects that we have going through the county and also through our nonprofit community, and those two teaming together with community groups. And so we have the opportunity to design together some information that we can show 35, 40 funders in May when they come through our community, which will be very positive, and I look forward to working with people on that. Thanks.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Mr. Leehan?
Yes, I was just going to add on the Sellwood, just to further what Commissioner Leininger was saying. It's sort of, in other words, we had made it clear early on that our money was intended to be the last money. So as the project is redesigned and those costs go down, is why we need to take another look at it and see if, as was said, our money is actually needed because we're the last piece in. So other than that, I don't have anything except to say that while I understand that yesterday was not good news in terms of, well, Groundhog's Day, because it was a little too sunny and would indicate that we were having six more weeks of winter, but I will take our weather here any day over Chicago. Right at the moment, most of the Midwest is completely bogged down in freezing, freezing cold and feats of snow, and we're having a beautiful spring. So I don't know how we could be more fortunate here. Groundhog's Day aside.
Very good point. There's no other, no further business before the commission? Then we adjourned.